Pastor Marty Reed from Zion Lutheran Church.
Let us pray. Gracious Father in heaven, it's right for us to thank and praise to serve and obey you. You have not only provided your Son in salvation in his name, you also grant us what we need to support our bodies in life. You have brought us together as a community and have safely brought us here for tonight's meeting. Father, you have established government and positions, all positions of authority. It's your will for elected and appointed leaders to promote and uphold that which is good, right, and proper. We ask you to give these men and women wisdom, strength, and courage to serve our community with integrity and to promote all that is good. We also ask you to kindly regard those in our nation and state. Bless and guide President Obama, Governor Nixon, and all public servants, especially with the weighty issues they address. Grant that they may also promote that which is good for our state and nation. Watch over and protect our police officers, firefighters, and all who have jobs that bring them into dangerous situations. Kindly regard our military, especially those from our community and those in harm's way. Enable them to serve our country with honor and to the best of their abilities, uphold their loved ones at home, and bring to an end their duty assignments and bring them safely home. Bless the teachers and students in our community as they prepare to begin a new school year. Now, Father, we ask you to guide our mayor and the city council members in tonight's meeting in all their discussions and decisions. Keep our city servants humble in their positions of leadership. Give them joy in their service, even when facing difficult frustrations and challenges and setbacks. Also meet any unspoken or unknown need of any person here tonight or of any city employee. Move everyone burdened with troubles to receive the rest that only you can give through your Son Jesus. We ask this in his name. Amen.
[affirmative]
Roll call. Councilman DeGerris.
Here.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Here.
Councilman Branham.
Here.
Councilman Tensley.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Russian.
Here.
And Mayor Pearson. Here. Seven present. Before we get started, I wanted to discuss how we've lost a couple of people in the community. Brenda Fox, who served as Butler County Collector. Just wish for healing for her family. And also wanted to mention a gentleman. His name is Frank Carroll. He has done a lot of service for the city, and he passed away in his sleep last night. And we just want to remember him because he did a lot of work with the art museum, and he was one of the key people for starting the 67 Project and Shelby Road. So I just wanted to remember him and just keep his family in your prayers. Disclosure of interest. Any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none. Citizens input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda.
Madam Mayor and council, Susan McVay, 211 Kaley Circle. You all have agreed on the contract and made offer to the new city manager, yet the public has not been notified of what the salary or benefit package is. How much are you paying the new city manager?
We are voting on the contract tonight.
This public record is supposed to be notified before you all vote on it. It's supposed to be disclosed.
Isn't it out there?
No. I didn't lie down. The contract.
Do you want her to go get the contract and pass it out to everybody?
It needs to be public before you all vote on it. And you all ran on transparency. It's amazing that we do not have that information.
Well, I wasn't aware that it wasn't out. We will take care of that. But the new wave contract was voted without seeing it also. It was also voted on without the majority, if not all of the council members. Without the majority of the council members reading it.
It's different, though.
How is it different, ma'am?
Personnel is different than real estate or assets.
That's the selling of an asset. And it had to be scheduled for, a penalty had to be scheduled for review.
You all need to disclose it. That's the point.
We're going to. I think we should put it out.
She's going to put that out. We can go ahead and move on if there's nothing else. Workshop required items. A representative from Kraft, Miles, and Tatum CPA will appear before the city council to present the annual audit for the city of Papa Bluff and Municipal Utilities for the fiscal year ended December 31, 2013.
Stephen Austin, Kraft, Miles, and Tatum, 1650 West Harper Street. I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity to be here this evening and to go over the financial results of the audit for December 31, 2013. And before we get into your packets, I would just like to say a quick thank you to the staff here at City Hall, as well as Municipal Utilities, for their patience during our time with them. They answered all of our questions, provided all the documentation that we requested, and were really just as helpful as they could be in allowing us to be as efficient as we could with them. Anytime you're at a place and asking a bunch of questions, it's really a trying time for them, so I'd like to say thank you for that. If you have your financial statements in front of you, we'll go ahead and get started, and I'll try to be as brief as I can. If you'll turn your attention to the third page of the table of contents, you'll see that the financial statements themselves are 79 pages long. We won't cover every page this evening. We'll spend the majority of our time probably covering the first 20 pages or so on the basic financial statements. And then I'd like to turn our attention to the back of the financial packet to review federal expenditures, as well as a summary of the overall audit results. So if there's no questions, the first thing we'll look at is the first page past the table of contents. It should be the independent auditor's report. You'll see that this report outlines that management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of these financial statements, as well as maintaining and designing internal controls over the financial statements. Our auditor's responsibility is to express an opinion on the city's financials. It's also to plan and perform the audit, to provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatements. And if you'll turn to the second page of the report, I think it's probably the most important paragraph for the council this evening. The first paragraph on the second page is the opinions paragraph. We have issued an unmodified opinion on these financial statements, which means, in our opinion, the financial statements are presented in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. If there's not any questions, we'll continue on to page four of the financial statements. Real briefly, pages four through 10, you'll see is the management's discussion and analysis. These pages were prepared by the city management, and basically, these pages will provide the reader a quick overview of the financial statements themselves and the ones that will go into much more detail over the next few minutes. So with that said, if you would, please turn with me to page 11, and we'll get started with the financial statements and go over the financial results. You'll notice, beginning on pages 11 and finishing through page 13, is the government-wide financial statements. These pages show the city as a whole, as you can see, divided by governmental activities, as well as business-type activities. And on page 11 is the statement of net position. The first section you'll see is the assets of the city. About a quarter of the way down, you'll see total assets at December 31 of 2013. We're a little over 144.6 million. Total assets overall decreased, 1.5 million. And really, just a couple of things to point out. The first line item on this page you'll see is the unrestricted cash and cash equivalents, a little over 11.3 million. This is actually down 1.9 million from last year. 1.2 million of that, excuse me, is for the governmental activities, and then the remaining 700,000 would be from the business-type activities. Third line item on this list you'll see is the city's accounts receivable. Overall, the city's accounts receivable were 3.3 million, increase of about 900,000 from last year. And the last thing in the asset section I'd like to look at is about six items down from your accounts receivable. You should see a due from other funds of 3,879,163. This due from other funds is an increase of 644,000 from last year. Liabilities is the next section you'll see. Total liabilities overall for the city, a little over 58.4 million. Total liabilities increased, 1.3 million compared to the same time last year. Once again, just a few things to point out real briefly. First line item you'll see is your accounts payable. City's accounts payable, a little over 6.5 million. That's actually up 1.3 million from last year, most of that coming from the city's business-type activities. About three or four items down from that, you'll see due to the other funds. I referenced that in the asset section. And once again, the 3.8 million increase of 644,000. You can see that that's divided between the governmental activities and the business-type activities. And I turn your attention now to the last item of the liabilities. You'll see long-term bonds payable was 18.2 million. That's actually down 1.4 million from last year, mostly due to principal payoff and moving long-term items into current portions as they become true. And then the last section on this page is the city's net position. Total net position as of December 31 of 2013, 86.2 million, decrease of 2.2 million from last year. If there's no questions, we'll turn now to page 12. And then pages 12 and 13 are the statement of activities, once again divided between governmental and business-type activities. Total expenses for the governmental activities you see is a little over 22 million. Expenses overall for the governmental activities was down about 193,000. And if you look to the right of your expenses, you'll see the program revenue, charges for service, operating grants and contributions, as well as capital grants and contributions. And the total program revenue for governmental activities is 6.9 million, down 1.8 million from last year due to a decrease in the capital grants and contributions for the general government and administration line item. Next section is your business-type activities. You'll see total business-type activities expenses, 51.5 million down, or excuse me, up. Total expenses were up 1.1 million, most of that coming from the municipal utilities line item, which you can see is a little over 48.3 million. And then your program revenue to the right of your expenses, total program revenue, 48.9 million overall, up about 2.9 million, once again, most of which coming from the municipal utilities line item. If we turn now to page 13, real briefly, the third line from the bottom on page 13, you can see the change in net position, 2.2 million decrease, once again divided between your governmental activities, as well as the business-type activities. Continuing on, we'll turn now to page 14. Pages 14 through 22 are the fund financial statements. These are the statements that most government officials are used to seeing on a day-to-day basis. Pages 14 through 17 will be the governmental funds, followed by pages 18 through 22 representing the proprietary funds. And just a quick note, I referenced on page 11 that the governmental activities cash was down 1.2 million. You can see the first line item on this page, the general fund cash unrestricted was 295,000. That's down 1.3 million from last year. Non-major funds, 2.7 million, increased about 100,000, resulting in the net decrease of cash of 1.2 million. Continuing on, if you would, turn just a few pages to page 16. On page 16, you will see the statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance for the year. Third line from the bottom, you'll see that the net change in fund balance for the total governmental funds was a decrease of 713,000. Once again, you can see broken down by the major funds, the general fund, the Highway 67 Tax Fund, and then your non-major funds in the third column. If there's not any questions, we'll continue on to page 18. On page 18 is the statement of net position for the proprietary funds. This is just a different presentation of the information we covered on page 11. It provides more detail. You can see it's divided into the two major enterprise funds, municipal utilities, Black River Coliseum, as well as the non-major fund, which represents the golf course and the airport. And over on the far right-hand column, you'll see the city's internal service fund as well. If there aren't any questions, we'll turn over one page to page 19. On pages 19 and 20, you can see the activity for the year for the proprietary funds. Once again, the municipal utilities, Black River Coliseum, and the non-major enterprise funds. And the far right-hand column, once again, is the internal service fund for the city. And if you flip over to page 20, third line from the bottom, you'll see the changes in net position for those funds as of, for the year end, December 31, 2013. Total enterprise funds, 520,521. Internal service fund, decrease of 668,391. And continuing on to page 21. On page 21 and 22 are the statement of cash flows for the proprietary funds. These pages will provide cash activity for the year, once again broken down by the proprietary funds, the two major funds, the two non-major funds, as well as internal service fund. And really, the thing to point out on this page is the third line from the bottom, you can see the net decrease and increase in cash for the year for each individual fund listed. If there's not any questions, we'll turn now to page 23, real briefly. Beginning on page 23, going through page 52, these are the notes to the basic financial statements. These pages that follow will provide additional detail of the information that we've just covered. It will provide a detail of the city's long-term debt, as well as capital assets and other information that we've briefly discussed on the financial statements. And at this point, I'd like to turn our attention to the back of the financial statements And on page 75, which should be past the two letters in the financials, you see Schedule 8, which is the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. These two pages, and the total on page 76, will outline all of the federal expenditures that the city spent for the year end, December 31, 2003, divided by U.S. departments, as well as individual programs within those departments. And on the bottom of page 76, you'll see that the city had total expenditures of 2.3 million. Just to give you some perspective, 2012's numbers was 1.9 million, so pretty comparative to the prior-year information. And these federal expenditures are in connection with the city's single audit that we performed. And the last thing I'd like to touch on is on page 78. And on page 78 is the schedule of findings and questioned costs, and I believe this page provides a good overview and summary of the results of our audit. Few items listed here. An unmodified opinion was issued on the financial statements for the city as of December 31, 2013. No material weaknesses in internal control over financial reporting were disclosed. Our audit did not disclose any non-compliance, which was material to the financial statements. There were no material weaknesses in internal control over major programs, which are the federal expenditures. We issued an unmodified opinion on compliance for the major programs, which means, in our opinion, the city was in compliance with the different compliance requirements over major programs. And lastly, the audit did not disclose any audit findings, which we are required to report to the council in accordance with OMB Circular A133.
Did we have to make any adjustments while you were going through this?
There were no adjustments that we felt that we needed to make to the financial statements. And once again, it's based upon materiality. There were no material adjustments that we felt that management, whether it be here at City Hall or Municipal Utilities, that we needed to adjust or have management make.
When you say you did not disclose, was there something that needed to be disclosed?
No.
Or just...
That just says there was nothing disclosed that needed to be disclosed.
Okay.
What that says.
Because it kind of reads like we didn't disclose it.
No, the wording is confusing, but you know, that's in accordance with what the auditing standards had. But no, there was nothing that we felt that we needed to report to the council this evening. Once again, everybody was really helpful and efficient. You know, we spent two weeks at Municipal Utilities and several more weeks here at City Hall, so by the time we walk out the door, everybody's glad to see us go. But even after we leave, we still communicate quite a bit back and forth, getting subsequent information that we need. So due to the circumstances, the time of our audit, I would like to thank Mark for his patience with this as we bombarded him with questions.
I was going to thank you for your patience, because it took us a little longer to get things to you this year.
Thank you very much.
If there's any questions after tonight, feel free to contact me. Mark has my contact information, phone call, email, or I can meet you at the office at any time that's convenient. Thank you very much.
Do we have a motion and a second to accept this as presented?
It's all moved.
Second. Motion and a second to accept item A as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, the city council will discuss a proposed ordinance approving the Second Amendment to the Intergovernmental Corporation Agreement with the Regional Transportation Development District and the Road Improvement Agreement between Larry Hillis and the Regional Transportation Development District.
Yes, Madam Mayor, this was approved by the TDD several weeks ago when they met. Basically, what it is, the road that went from the end of Barren Road to W Highway was taken out when Larry Hillis developed that property. Everybody first thought that was a city street. It wasn't. Turned out, it was actually a state highway. When Larry bought the shed that was there from the State Highway Department, he also bought that road. Larry wants to put that road back in there so he can develop that front part of the property. He's asked the TDD to put him on the top of the Phase 2 list of the TDD. If those funds become available, the TDD would reimburse him for constructing that road. If they do not become available, then Larry would simply be out that money himself. We feel like later on, the money will be there. Mark Richardson's also here, representing Larry, if anybody has any questions for him.
Madam Mayor, that's been a major concern of my constituents, is that we get that road put back at some point in time. I didn't realize the amount of traffic from, I guess, the McLean subdivision that goes through there. And I'd like to see this go through any way possible. We can help Mr. Hillis out in any shape or form to get that back open. I think my constituents would be very happy.
My understanding is that he's going to build it back anyway. What he, all he wanted was to be considered first on the list of when it comes into the Phase 2 project to get paid for, that he would be the first person to get reimbursed on that list. Am I correct in that, Mr. Richardson?
Yes, you are, Madam Mayor. The reconstruction of Barren Road Extended, as we commonly refer to it, was a unprioritized Phase 2 project with the TDD. And Mr. Hillis has agreed, at his own cost, to go ahead and reconstruct that road. And if and when there are sufficient funds from the TDD, which would necessarily be from a second bond letting, that he would be reimbursed for that. Currently, the final engineering is done, and they're getting ready to let bids. S.H. Smith is here to probably answer those technical questions. But we are hopeful that we will be driving on that by Halloween, which is about 80 days from now. So all Mr. Hillis is asking for, for the city, to validate what the TDD unanimously voted on earlier, and that is to let him build it at his own cost. And if and when monies are available from the TDD, he would be reimbursed at that time. It's all going to be built according to city standards. It will be a city street. And finally, the controversy of whether it was a highway of the state of Missouri, or whether it was a county road, or whether it was a city street, will be resolved forever. The city will own that street, and it will be dedicated once it's completed.
Just for clarification for the public, Mr. Hillis is building the road. He's going to donate it to the city, and then if there is money in the second phase of the project, he will get his money back.
He will. And if there is no money available, Mr. Councilman Branham, he will not be reimbursed. It's no commitment here other than reimbursement subject to availability of funds. I'm sorry, Mayor. I didn't mean to interrupt.
I said it, and it still gets dedicated to the city regardless.
Oh, yes. It will be dedicated to the city regardless. The city will own it. And we will finally be driving again on Barren Road that will connect directly to W, and will be re-diverting off of 67 North, which is going to be a great benefit to not only Crestwood Manor and McLean subdivision, but everyone who travels in and out of our city from Highway W. I'd be happy to answer any questions. It was unanimously approved by the TDD.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like a motion, since the TDD has approved this unanimously, that we move this to the voting session to be held, I guess, the 18th.
Motion and a second to move item B to the voting session on August 18th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item C, the city council will discuss a conflict of interest waivers for Gilmore and Bell, PC, relative to the Regional Transportation Development District and the Cripple Creek Transportation Development District.
Yes, this is a conflict of interest waiver with Gilmore and Bell. They represent the city, and they also represent the two TDDs. And I think we've done this annually for the last couple of years, and they're just simply asking for another waiver of conflict of interest.
I believe we ought to table this until the... I believe we ought to table this until the new city manager is in place. I don't, I'm not sure he has ideas for attorneys. And to me, this is a major decision line up to.
I think it's just a waiver. They're already, because they're already working with us, really, it just, it's a waiver that allows them to work with both us and the TDD. I don't think it necessarily, even without a waiver, I don't think it would bar them from still doing the work. I think it's just a precautionary thing that they want.
Right, we've worked with Gilmore and Bell for years.
Is this like a yearly thing we do?
I think we've done this annually the last couple of years. Is that?
If it's not been annually, it's been every other year, but this is standard.
But we do this kind of standard operation.
Yeah, it's routine.
Yes.
Now, with Gilmore and Bell, are we on a standard contract with them for these, or is it just done as needed?
I don't think we have any contract with them.
We don't.
So in that event, if different administrative changes happen, then we could actually go to different firms if we wanted to.
I think so.
So, yeah.
Even with or without the waiver, you could do that.
Yep.
So, are you guys wanting to table it, or are you wanting to, do we have a motion and a second to approve it, or do we want to table it? You guys tell me.
Do you feel comfortable, Councilman James, are you comfortable with moving forward?
I believe I'd like to see what the new city manager has to say about it.
Did you want to make a motion to table it?
I'd make a motion to table it.
Table it till the next, till when the new city manager's here?
Yes.
I will second that motion.
Madam Mayor, what was the motion?
Motion to table item C, which is just the waivers.
Okay.
Until the, until the new city manager. And I don't think it would hurt anything to table it until he gets here, so. So a motion and a second to table item C until the new city manager gets here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. We'll go ahead and table that until next meeting. Okay. Item D, the city council will review a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a state homeland security grant for the police department.
Yes, this is an application for a grant with the police department. I think Dave Sutton's here, if anybody has any questions on the specifics of it.
Mr. Sutton, just how much is the grant for?
It's unspecified, unspecified amount. We'll be asking for a couple of four-wheel-drive pickups and maybe a UTV for bad weather or any other kind of disaster, just for transportation of emergency services.
Homeland Security will hopefully provide us with the.
If we're approved, they'll be a hundred percent.
A hundred percent grants?
Yes, it won't cost us anything if we're approved.
I'm not sure how we already have, but we do have a H-1 Hummer, I think. I don't know if that's how we got it, but we do have.
It's a separate program, but that's, that was also a hundred percent.
It's a type of vehicle we would get when we were out during the ice storm and the bad weather we had this year. They were able to get around in that vehicle very well and respond.
It's a big difference.
Or flooding.
Right.
I think there's no harm in trying for a one-hundred percent grant.
And may I make a motion to move this to the voting session tonight?
Second.
Motion and a second to move item D to the voting session tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, the city council will discuss the selection of an engineering consultant service relative to the Fair Street Bridge project.
Yes, this is an eighty-twenty grant with MoDOT for the Fair Street Bridge, close to the industrial park. I kind of tried to approach this the way we did the engineering services for the TDD last year. I set up a committee of Councilman David Johnson, City Planner Dennis Avery, and Street Superintendent Jeremy Graeble. And they reviewed the engineer qualifications. We used forms provided by MoDOT to rate those engineers. They're on a point system. I think I enclosed those with your packet. When you totaled up all the points, Smith and Company had two-hundred-and-seventy points, and the next one was Horner and Schiffern with two-hundred-and-sixty-three points. So with that, the committee was recommending Smith and Company for this project. And the cost on engineering services is in the forty-thousand-dollar range.
So the city would be responsible for twenty percent of the forty-thousand dollars?
I think basically for twenty percent of the construction cost. I'm not exactly sure on the, I don't think it's twenty percent of the engineering. And most of the, most of that twenty percent will be on in-kind work.
Madam Mayor, that bridge is a very important part of the thoroughfare, even to your award, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
I actually went down and looked at it, and it is in terrible shape, needs to be addressed years ago instead of now. And I would make a motion that we move forward with the proposed engineer that the three gentlemen have recommended.
Second.
So we wanting to move this to the voting session August eighteenth?
Yes.
Okay. Motion and a second to move item E to the voting session, August eighteenth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, the city council will review a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to rezone property from M-1 Light Residential to C-3 Central Area Commercial for future commercial development. The applicant is Kenneth and Jennifer Boyes, H.C. Ford Donifin, for a vacant lot lying south and north of ten-ten Southwestwood Boulevard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you stated, this property is owned by Kenneth and Jennifer Boyes. Present time, it is M-1 Light Industrial. It is joined on the north by C-3 Central Area Commercial, and on the south by M-2 Heavy Physically, it lies between the bottle shop at one-thousand-four Southwestwood and the deep freeze at one-thousand-ten Southwestwood. It's a very small lot. To the east of it is M-1 Light Industrial, to the west of it is M-1 Light Industrial, and again, to the south is M-2 General Industrial, and to the north is C-3 Central Area Commercial. Access is from Southwestwood on the outer road, and police and fire protection is available, Fire Station Number Three being the first responder. The applicants have owned this property for a number of years, and because of the small lot size, when the M-1 Light Industrial zoning setbacks are imposed, the area left to build on becomes so small to become undevelopable and rendering the property useless. In the industrial zone, you have to have a twenty-five-foot front yard, a twenty-five-foot rear yard, and a ten-foot side yard on each property line. And that would be difficult on this property. You'd almost be folding in on yourself if you tried to create those spaces, because the property is thirty-six point four feet wide at one point, and thirty-eight point three at the other end, and then probably a hundred-and-sixty feet deep. So there wouldn't be much of a building there if they met the existing setbacks. It went through planning and zoning with no stipulations recommended, and planning and zoning and the planning commission, the planning department, I mean, did recommend approval of this request. And the recommendation is that the property is contiguous to C-3 Central Area Commercial on the north side, and recommend approval of the rezoning request to C-3. Questions?
Are they planning on possibly building there or something at this time?
I don't think they have immediate intent to do any building. Mr. Boyes is in the audience tonight, and when he was asked that at planning and zoning, he said he didn't have any intention at this point to build on it. He'd bought it thinking he might, you know, some years ago, and then when he got into it, he realized he didn't have enough space to build, given the present zoning. He bought the property from Kenneth Urick, the property owner to the south, some years ago. So it would have as much value to the adjoining property owners as to another individual, I would think. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone doesn't have, if there's no other questions, do we have a motion and a second to move this to the voting session on August eighteenth?
I'll make a motion that we move it to the voting session on August eighteenth. Second.
Okay. Motion and a second to move item F to the voting session on August eighteenth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, the city council will discuss a proposed ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an employment contract with Heath Kaplan for the position of city manager of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Madam Mayor, there was a, on section C on page three on my tab, I guess that's the same on the document on my tablet, the four-fifty-seven plan. I wasn't aware that the rest of the city employees, that didn't get paid for. And my position is that, you know, he's going to be the chief administrative officer of the city, but he's still an employee of the city, and should have the same benefit plan as the other employees, which means that that one, we don't pay any on the employees' portion of that. Am I correct, Mr. Massingham?
Yes, that's a voluntary retirement plan we instituted probably fifteen years ago. The city's never matched that.
Councilman DeGerris, did you not think that that was appropriate when we were discussing this?
I didn't realize that, like I said, when we were discussing it, that the city employee.
Because it was discussed in pretty, pretty serious detail. I mean, we were at it for an hour and forty-five minutes.
I just found that out later, that that wasn't something that we do for the rest of the employees.
Okay, well.
I don't think that information was made clear to us then.
Well, so the city employees are long-term employees. The city manager is not designed to be a long-term.
They're still employees, and they deserve the same benefits. I mean, they should be treated equally.
It's a different position.
Well, when we discussed that, this is seen in a lot of models in Missouri and other states, where they do that for managerial positions. And I understand, as much as we want to compare the city manager's position to the position of city, it is uniquely different from the standpoint of what they do and their function and their longevity. Some situations in some communities, you may have a city manager for a long time. Most of the applicants that we interviewed and received applications for, then, I don't think there was one that I can recall that went over six years. There might have been one. So that's just the nature of the beast when you're dealing with a city manager's position. So I don't have any problem understanding the difference in dealing with our original. And I didn't say, in the discussion that we had, I didn't say that other employees had it. I just said that this is seen in other municipalities.
Well, not all of our employees have. Like I said, it's a voluntary. I think we've probably got, boy, I'm just guessing off the top of my head, maybe fifty people in it, so.
One of the things that I wanted to bring up is, you know, when you attract qual, like someone like Mr. Kaplan, they cost money. I mean, there, there are things you have to pay for to get them here. And Steve Halter, he's the Chamber of Commerce president, he said to us, "Don't you lose this candidate over money." And his advice really meant a lot to me, that he considered Mr. Kaplan as somebody that the city can't miss out on. And I think most of the people in the selection committee felt the same way. So, there's Marty Michaels shaking his head. Sorry, I pointed him out, but there's, there's just, he's an amazing candidate, so you have to pay for an amazing candidate sometimes. Okay, if there's no other questions, do we have a motion and a second to move this to the voting session tonight?
I'll make the motion to move it to the voting session.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to move item G to the voting session tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to action required items. Bill number seventy-seven thirteen, the city council will take action on an ordinance approving change order number one to the Papa Bluff Walking Trail, Phase Two, Project Number P-130023.
Move for first reading.
Second.
A motion and a second for first reading of bill number seventy-seven thirteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Kirby?
Caught your guard. Well, sorry, doing double duty here.
Okay.
Bill number seventy-seven thirteen, an ordinance approving change order number one to Papa Bluff Walking Trail, Phase Two, Project Number P-30023.
Move for second reading, bill number seventy-seven thirteen.
Second.
Motion and a second for second reading of bill number seventy-seven thirteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Kirby?
An ordinance approving change order number one to Papa Bluff Walking Trail, Phase Two, Project Number P-30023.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion and a second for adoption of bill number seventy-seven thirteen. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilman Branham.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Russian.
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson.
Yes. Bill number seventy-seven fourteen, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to execute an employment contract with Heath Kaplan for the position of city manager of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Move for first reading.
Second.
Motion and a second for first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Kirby?
Bill number seventy-seven fourteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to execute an employment contract with Heath Kaplan for the position of city manager of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, for a term not to exceed one year.
Move for second reading.
Second.
Motion and a second for second reading of bill number seventy-seven fourteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Kirby?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to execute an employment contract with Heath Kaplan for the position of city manager of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, for a term not to exceed one year.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion and a second for adoption. Comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilman Branham.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris.
No.
Councilwoman Abshir.
No.
Mayor Protem Russian.
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
We have five yes votes.
Item DD, Resolution eighteen oh five, the city council will take action on a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a state homeland security grant for the police department.
Move for reading of Resolution one-eight-zero-five.
Second.
Motion and a second for reading of Resolution eighteen oh five. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Kirby?
A resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to execute and submit an application for a state homeland security grant for the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri Police Department.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion and a second for adoption of Resolution eighteen oh five. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need to do a roll call?
Yeah.
Comments or questions? All right, roll call. Sorry.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilman Branham.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Russian.
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Item EE, the city council, the city of Papa Bluff will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the Open Meetings Law, section 610.021.1, RSMO relative to litigation, 610.021.2, RSMO relative to real estate, and 610.021.3, RSMO relative to personnel.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion, move to closed session after Mr. Massingham's report.
Second.
Motion, a second to move it to closed session after the city manager's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I really don't have much report. I would like to say, I guess this will be my last meeting as interim city manager. I'd like to thank all the council members for working with me. I appreciate it. Couldn't have done it without you all and the department heads and all the employees. And I hope I've served you well the last few months. Just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
You've done a very excellent job. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate you all, too.
Mark has done a really great job in that position, and so, thank you.
And I wasn't saying that to get thank yous from you all.
No, we appreciate it.
You deserve it.
I also want to thank Pam for stepping up and taking on a little bit more responsibility. She's done a great job.
Yes, she has.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.